Welcome, everyone. I'll call to order this Bloomington Common Council meeting, regular session, and Committee of the Hall for Wednesday, March 6, 2019. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff.
Here.
Chopra.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Granger.
Present.
Rallo.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And here's our agenda, and if you'd like an agenda, you can find them beside the Clerk on the desk there. We'll have approval of minutes for December 19 of 2018, regular session, and we'll have approval of minutes for special sessions for 23rd of January and the 13th of February 2019, and we will have approval of minutes for the 21st of February 2019. That would be the State of the City Special Session. Then we'll go to reports. We'll have reports from council members, the mayor and city offices, council committees, and we have an encomium this evening for Toby Strout. Then we will go to the public, and you'll have an opportunity for 20 minutes for public comment, if you would like to make a comment not on our agenda. Then we'll go to appointments for boards and commissions. We have one item of legislation for second reading in resolutions, that being Resolution 1904 to confirm Resolution 19-03 extending the period of designation of an economic revitalization area, approving the statements of benefits, and authorizing periods of abatement for real and personal property improvements regarding properties at 1300 South Patterson Drive, Catalent, Indiana LLC petitioner. We will then go to legislation for first reading, and that is Ordinance 1907, which is amending the Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding updating permissible towing and storage fees for authorized towing services. Then we will go to additional public comment, another 20 minutes, if the public would like to speak. We'll visit our council schedule before we adjourn, and then we'll reconvene as Committee of the Hall chaired by Councilmember Chopra on Ordinance 1907. So, that is our agenda summation. Are there approval of minutes?
Mr. President, I move approval of the minutes of December 19, 2018, regular session.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any additions or corrections? City Clerk Bolden, do you have a comment?
I think I was going to make the same comment that Councilmember Piedmont Smith was going to make, was that there were several corrections made to the minutes for December 19, 2018, and also to thank her for pointing them out. So, thank you.
Bravo. Thank you. So those additions and corrections have been made.
They have been made, and they were distributed to all the council members shortly before the meeting, so.
Very good. Any other additions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of adoption of the regular session minutes of 19th of January 2018, say aye.
December, aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. President, I move approval of...
January 23, minutes 2019, special session.
Second.
Okay. Just moved motion to second. Any additions or corrections? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, there was... This is... Which date? January 23?
Yes.
There was a correction, but it has been made and is in front of you. It's the highlighted thing.
Oh, okay. Just received it. It was an addition of a name? Oh, sorry. Okay. Any other additions and corrections? Okay, seeing none, then we will... All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, those are adopted.
Mr. President, I move approval of February 13, 2019, special session minutes.
Second.
Any additions or corrections for those minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Those are adopted.
And I move approval of minutes from February 21, 2019, State of the City Special Session Minutes.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections for those? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Those minutes are adopted. We will now go to reports. From council members, I'll start on my left with Councilmember Sandberg.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Sims.
Thank you. I do want to say that most people watching, I'm sure have noticed, and maybe folks in the audience, that Councilmember Bowlen is not here this evening. And if you don't know, he lost his father a week or so ago. So, we miss him, and just want everyone to keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Ruff, do you have a council member report?
No report. I'd just like to thank Councilmember Sims for making note of Councilman Bowlen's tragic loss of his father.
Thank you. Councilmember Chopra.
Yes, briefly, it's that time of year where we start to see all those blue and yellow college pro painter signs all over town that are not in compliance with our city code. I wanted to let my District 3 representatives know that I made contact with the franchisee, who is always a new person every year, so it's just a struggle, that they are not in compliance with our city code, and they are not wanted in the public right of ways in the front of every single neighborhood in the city of Bloomington. I have zero faith that they'll be removed, but the message has been passed on, and if they are not, I will be contacting perhaps some people sitting in the back of the room today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chopra. Councilmember Piedmont Smith, do you have a report?
I just wanted to remind everyone that March is Women's History Month, and there are two events coming up that are organized by the Commission on the Status of Women here in Bloomington. The first is the annual Women's History Month Luncheon, which will be March 20, starting at 11:30 a.m. in the Convention Center. And the second event, and, well, I should mention that there will be awards for Women of the Year, and for the Lifetime Achievement Award, and the Toby Strout Lifetime Achievement Award given at this event. Mary Getze, who was my choir director way back when with the University Children's Choir, is to be named Woman of the Year. I unfortunately do not have in front of me who the other award winners will be, so I apologize. Then we have a Leadership Development Event, which is going to be on March 30, from 10 a.m. to noon, here in the Showers Building, and there will be an Emerging Leader Award presented at that event. So I urge you to check those out. If you just do a Google search, Women's History Month, Bloomington, Indiana, it'll take you right to the Bloomington, City of Bloomington page with more information about signing up or attending those events. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Granger.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate my colleague, Mr. Sims, on successfully walking away from his, I mean retiring from his job at Indiana University. He's already knows how to play the game, and he's been down to Florida and golfed and everything. Anyway, take it easy, and put all your time in this. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for announcing Women's History Month. I had, I was going to mention a few events, but those have been mentioned, so I have nothing else to add. And so we'll now go to the mayor and city offices for any reports. No reports? Okay. So we'll go to council committee report. And we have a encomium for Toby Strout this evening, and we need a motion to adopt that.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. This is an encomium that was drafted by council with staff support, and I'll go ahead and read it. We were going to have Steve Bowlen read it this evening. This is recognizing Toby Strout Way. Whereas Toby Strout served as Executive Director of Middleway House from 1987 to 2017, and carried out those duties as a fierce and tireless advocate for empowering survivors and the community's response to their needs. And whereas, during those 30 years as a local and national leader in the field of domestic and sexual violence, she refined the focus of Middleway House on supporting survivors of domestic violence and their children, and worked to extend the agency's services and resources to survivors of sexual violence and human trafficking. And whereas, the services provided, these survivors were expanded to add crisis intervention, legal advocacy, support groups, on-scene advocacy, licensed childcare and youth programs, a prevention curriculum within schools, and many other vital initiatives. And whereas, with the construction of the Rise, Middleway House's transitional housing program in 1998, and the renovation of the historic Coca-Cola bottling company in 2010, much of these services are now performed in what has been a quiet transformation of this area of South Washington Street. And whereas, in conjunction with the city's bicentennial celebrations, it is fitting to lend her name to these blocks with their historic facades and empowering future. Now therefore, be it hereby declared by the Common Council of the City of Bloomington that the Common Council wholeheartedly supports the naming of South Washington from Third Street to Second Street as Toby Strout Way, in honor of her contributions to the community and many services to survivors that she brought together on this street. That is our encomium. Are there comments from council? Councilmember Sandberg, would you like to begin?
Well, those of us that knew Toby Strout and had the pleasure of watching her remarkable work with Middleway House can certainly attest that she was a force of nature. She was a true activist, who was an advocate for the women that she and her organization served. The countless women whose lives she and Middleway House have changed are certainly worthy of this tribute, and for what is to come on Friday with the naming of the street in her honor. This is a wonderful thing to celebrate, and to remember her life and the legacy that she has left. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Other comment from council? Councilmember Ruff?
Well, as the encomium language indicates, Toby Strout was, really embodied this, one of the essential elements of Bloomington as a community. Selfless service to better the community and the quality of life, particularly for those in unfortunate circumstances. And what she contributed to the community is lasting and incredibly important, and has made a huge difference. And even though she's gone on, her impact and her influence and her contributions will be, continue to be felt for a long time, if not for forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. Toby was one of the early people I met when I moved to Bloomington, I think it was 17 years ago, and I appreciate that my colleague, Susan Sandberg, said she's a force of nature. But one of the things that I know about Toby from the very first time that I met her, she was like a mother chick, and she would do anything. She would fight to protect her... She was like a mother hen who would fight to protect her chicks. And she did a lot for this community in educating, bringing us along as to the importance of these issues that we're still, unfortunately, fighting against and for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Like to add anything?
I just want to say that I got to know Toby because she was an original member of the Commission on, the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability, and she was a constant reminder of the equity, that is, that it tends to be eclipsed by environment and economics. And she would always turn us back to social equity, which was important. And she served there, I think, about eight or nine years, actually. And I just want to say it took tremendous courage to take on the subject of domestic violence, and to do it for 30 years. And she transformed our community and the world in that process, so.
We'll now go to public, if the public would like to have anything to say on this topic. Please step forward. Okay. Anyone like to speak on this? Okay. We're back to council. Then for adoption, should we call the roll? Voice for it? Okay. All in favor of accepting this encomium recognizing Toby Strout Way, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Great. We've accepted it. Thank you. Okay, we will now go to public. If the public has something that they would like to say, step forward and state your name. And items not on our agenda. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. And you might want to sign in. There's a sign-up sheet, I think, perhaps there? Is there? Okay. To help the clerk. Thank you.
I apologize in advance. I haven't spoken in front of people in a while, so. My name is David Van Devender. I am the Operations Manager for Lime Scooters in Bloomington.
Could you pull the mic a little bit? Come closer. Thank you.
Yeah, I am the Operations Manager for Lime Scooters in Bloomington. I was born here in Bloomington, less than a mile away. I went to IU here. I've raised my two sons here, and I really care about this community. So, I consider Bloomington to be my town, and I think that Lime Scooters are good for Bloomington. I recently completed the survey that the city has put out about the potential ordinance, and found it lacking any place to put any positive comments in there. So I wanted to come and just lay out some of the things that I think are positive. So since October, when the scooters were launched, more than 200,000 rides have been taken. We have between six and 15 full-time operations specialists, or mechanics, to work on the scooters and move them around. Our operations specialists and mechanics all make more than a living wage, which I know is important to everyone in this community. We also utilize independent contractors to pick up the scooters and charge them at night and redeploy them in the mornings. And since October, those chargers have earned over $100,000. In talking to them, some of them use that money to buy Christmas for their families, pay bills that they were otherwise struggling with. One of our chargers was able to pay down his debt-to-income ratio so he could get a loan for a new minivan. And one actually conveyed to me that he was able to keep his startup afloat. He builds practice gates for, like, motorcycle races, and I thought that was kind of interesting, so. Some general stats about Lime. Globally, since we've launched, riders have traveled more than 28 million miles, which is the equivalent of 117 trips to the moon. Thirty-two percent of our riders reported that their last trip was to or from dining or entertainment establishments. Forty percent reported that their last trip was commuting to or from work or school. And around the world, approximately a third of our riders reported that they were replacing a trip by an automobile, be it personal, or a ride share, or taxis. So what that means in Bloomington is that potentially 66,000 of those 200,000 rides that have been taken since October have been to replace vehicles. In some cities around the world, they're seeing as high as 40% rates. And just so we know that Lime isn't just for rich people or young college students. Globally, the average age of our rider is 32 years old, and 25% of our riders are older than or equal to 37 years of age. We also have programs to help people with less means. We have a program called Lime Access that anybody that receives, like, social services or assistance can utilize that. Lime is also very integrated into the communities, and they care about them. On Election Day in 2018, 1 in 10 of our rides utilized free promo codes to get to and from the polls. Lime also is concerned for the environment, and in October of 2018, Lime's fleet became the industry's first 100% carbon-free electric fleet. Here in Bloomington, we're striving to reduce that even further. We're about to begin using two EAssist trikes to actually move some of the scooters around instead of always using our van. And then, lastly, I just wanted to note that I've been working closely with Morgan and the mayor's office, and the Director of Parking Operations at IU, in trying to respond and remedy any complaints within 60 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and providing that information. Are there other comments from public on items not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on now to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any? Seeing none, we'll move to legislation for second reading and resolutions.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
I move that ordinance... Is this ordinance or resolution?
It's a resolution.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I move that Resolution 1904 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Resolution 1904 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 1904 to confirm Resolution 1903 extending the period of designation of an economic revitalization area, approving the statement of benefits, and authorizing periods of abatement for real and personal property improvements regarding properties at 1300 South Patterson Drive, Catalent, Indiana LLC petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution confirms Resolution 1903 extending the economic revitalization area designation of a parcel owned by Catalent, Indiana LLC, and known as 1300 South Patterson Drive. This designation extension was recommended by the Economic Development Commission, and will enable the expansion of Catalent's packaging, vial filling, and syringe filling capacity, creating additional jobs within the city. The resolution also authorizes a 10-year period of abatement for certain personal and real property improvements at 1300 South Patterson Drive, and sets the same abatement schedule for both real and personal property. Please note that the public comment on this agenda item serves as the legally advertised public hearing on this legislation, and you do not have a committee recommendation for this resolution.
Thank you. Clerk Bolden? Oh. I move that the resolution be adopted.
I move that Resolution 1904 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Payne, please.
Can you all hear me? Okay. Brian Payne, Department of Economic and Sustainable Development. So this is our third hearing on this issue. Thank you for your attention. I will speak briefly on what I think are the highlights of the proposal. Catalent is here to answer questions, as of course am I, but they will not be making remarks. So I'll try to keep it short. So in a nutshell, Catalent proposes to upgrade their production and packaging facility at 1300 South Patterson Drive, which would increase their total assessed property value by a figure of $44 million. On that new basis of property tax liability, the city would authorize a declining abatement schedule, reducing projected taxes payable on the new property value from $4.55 million to $2.2 million over the 10-year period. To receive this incentive, Catalent commits to invest $125 million in capital improvements, and add 200 new positions at a minimum average salary of $66,500 plus benefits. Procedurally, this has been unanimously approved by Economic Development Commissioners and supported by staff. So the key points from a staff perspective are these. The net benefit to the city is very strong. This is, would result in $2.2 million in new tax revenue to the city, an additional $1 million in county option income taxes, 200 high-wage, full-benefit jobs, and $132 million in additional wages circulating in the community. The full revenue generation after the 10-year window on that $44 million would continue as well as once the full property value is phased in. So beyond the 10-year window, this will be taxed at the full rate, authorized under the law. These are excellent jobs. These jobs are life-changing for the unemployed and the underemployed workers in our community. The average salary of these jobs is in the top quintile of Bloomington wages. Even the lowest-paying jobs created by this proposal would place in the top half of area wages. This doesn't include the security and safety of full benefits that accompany the jobs. The marginal benefit of employment wage growth from minimum wage to a living wage job, from a living wage job to a competitively paid, above-average wage job cannot be overstated. The marginal benefit to those households is huge, and we believe well worth the public investment. This is the highest return on incentive dollar for a commercial job creation tax abatement project in city recent history, as far as I'm aware in city history. The value we're getting in annual wage dollars to public dollars spent is twice the value we've gotten from previous tax abatements to the same entity. Much higher capital commitment by a factor of more than 100%. In terms of efficient growth, this particular proposal is a unique example of efficient growth. It doesn't require additional road infrastructure. It doesn't require additional wastewater. It is the augmentation of the productivity of an already existing facility. We're taking a parcel, and instead of creating more sprawl, we're making that parcel more useful. Ah, thank you. So, we believe this is exactly the type of condensing of value addition that we need from commercial projects. This is an incentive to succeed, not merely a reward for doing business. Catalent, Indiana is competing for a finite pool of capital project resources from Catalent Corporate, and the outcome of this application will influence the course of future developments. I don't think we live in a universe where it is either absent this abatement, Catalent never invests another dime of improvement in Bloomington. I also don't think we live in a universe where absent this abatement, it occurs exactly as proposed. I think it's less an example of but-for causation, but-how causation. How will this partnership go forward? How many jobs will be created? What will be the average wages of those jobs? How will the relationship between the city and a core employment pillar and member of the business community go forward, and what will happen to the other hundreds of thousands of open square feet at the old RCA facility? So I think successful partnership on this project will make future expansion in Bloomington rather than one of Catalent's 30-plus other domestic facilities far more likely. So in conclusion, staff recommends your strong support of this proposal, and we look forward to working with you to continue maximizing the value of incentive dollars and progressing rather than making this a set price of doing business. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Before we go to questions, would the representative from Catalent like to add anything? You're satisfied? Okay, we'll go then to council. Councilmember Chopra?
Yes, my question is for Mr. Payne, and please excuse my confusion over the difference between what we're voting on this evening and our last vote, if you wouldn't mind explaining the difference between...
So it's the same project? I don't believe there's a difference. If I've communicated otherwise, I apologize. Where's the confusion?
Same project, but last time we voted yes or no on a tax abatement.
Perhaps we'll go to council attorney Daniel Sherman, who can explain what a confirmatory resolution represents. Could...
Yes, that would be helpful. Thank you.
You're confirming each of the elements that were initially approved in, on the 6th, so the extension of the ERA, the year analysis, year evaluation of the statement of benefits, and that they warrant this tax abatement. And there may be something else I'm missing, but all those things you approved two weeks ago, you're confirming... ago, you're confirming tonight.
It requires two yes votes. Wow.
Yes, there's a declaratory resolution by statute, and this is the confirmatory resolution. And this also includes an advertised public hearing.
That answers my...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Sherman, if... Am I correct in saying that we have three options this evening? That is to vote yes in the confirmatory resolution, to vote yes with amendment, or to deny? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The third element I didn't... I failed to mention was the periods of the abatement. And in this case, there are ten-year periods of abatement for both what's done on real estate and personal property.
Thank you. Does that serve to clarify?
Exactly.
Okay. Other questions from council? Okay. Mr. Payne, thank you. I think that we're satisfied because we've gone through this two meetings long. So we'll go to public now. If the public would like to comment on this resolution? Okay, seeing no public, we're back to council for final comment or recommendation. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes on this. I just wanted to make a comment. This is a site that before Cook and which has now Catalent moved there, it was vacant for a long time. A lot of that area where RCA used to be is still vacant, and a lot of the development that has gone in there, the dermatology clinic, the Social Security Office, et cetera, is a very suburban-type development. It's all set back from the street with big parking lots and such. And I was at a meeting of Bloomington Restorations, Inc. about a week ago, and, you know, there were concerns about the hospital site, and people were like, "Well, we don't want the hospital site to end up looking like the RCA site," you know, with this kind of spread-out big buildings. And the lucky thing for us and the city is that we have... The city has purchased the hospital site, so we have a lot more control over what is built there. It's also between two neighborhoods, so it really lends itself to just continuing the street grid and building in the context of those neighborhoods. So while I'm happy to see Catalent expand, it's unfortunate that that whole site that used to be RCA is... Has really not been integrated into the neighborhood where I live, McDowell Gardens neighborhood. You know, there's no street grid there. It's really one big kind of shopping mall-like area, which is largely still vacant. So that is unfortunate. I mean, it's come a long way, certainly since RCA left, but it's not really the ideal of what we'd like to see in the middle of the city as far as infill development. So this is not a criticism of Catalent at all. It's just a comparison with how we can do better with the hospital site. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg, did you have a comment?
Thank you. I'm always grateful to be able to welcome a new corporate entity into the community that will develop into a good partner with the city of Bloomington with respect to what we need. What we need are good jobs in this community. We need good jobs with good wages, with good benefits, and that is what this operation tends to, you know, promises to provide. And so for that reason alone, I am in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I think many of our discussions of members up here on the board, and particularly in campaigning time, but one of the things many of us talk about is wanting to create additional jobs or job creation. I think this project hits the mark. It will increase a number of jobs with higher wages and some very decent benefits. I think we owe thanks to the staff for their hard work, the BEDC staff, and the Catalent folks. We've asked a lot of questions. I think you've worked hard to clarify or answer our questions. Is it a perfect world? No. Are we giving up some things to get some things? Yeah. But I think in the scale, the city is going to benefit longer term and at a higher rate than what we might perceive to give up. So I will vote yes for it, and I really appreciate the hard work and look forward to future projects that we can do to help our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruff?
Well, at the last meeting, there was a discussion that a more appropriate way to think about this proposal or tax abatements in general was that it's really an... It's a deferred AV enhancement rather than a tax abatement. And while I understand that, it seems a little bit obtuse to me because you could make the same argument about any improvement to property. It's going to enhance AV, it's going to increase AV, and while not all investments in real property or personal property will result in significant job benefits, job dividends, that wasn't the argument. The argument that was made was that thinking of the tax payment itself as a deferred AV enhancement was more accurate than tax payment, and I just have to disagree with that fundamentally just because I understand it, but every investment, and ninety-nine percent of people's investments in properties don't result in tax subsidies, tax abatements. You know, this is great. This is a great project, good jobs, good wages, but to me, that doesn't mean sort of automatically granting a tax abatement that I think we should only grant if we really believe, we're highly confident that it wouldn't happen without it. Now, I don't... I know that not everybody agrees with that analysis on my council colleagues, and I respect that. That's fine. But that's where I'm at. I just cannot believe that a firm of this size, number one in the world for what they do internationally and globally, with the tiny portion of overall operating costs of doing business at this facility that this tax payment represents, in a facility here that's already set up to do this, and it's just an expansion of that, that this abatement somehow makes it... That it's not more efficient to do it somewhere else. I can't quite accept that. I'm glad Catalent's making this investment here, and I'm hoping that they'll make every effort to hire all positions from existing local unemployed or underemployed people in the community. And so it's not a criticism of any aspect of the business of the firm, of the model, of the proposal, simply that I can't believe that... I don't accept that this is a critical element in making the expansion Bloomington's existing facility for this the best place to do it. I don't think that the abatement does that, and so since I don't believe that, then I can't support it. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Other comment? Okay, I'll have a crack then. I'm sympathetic to Councilmember Ruff's argument, but I think I differ because... And this was discussed at the EDC meeting, and that is that there were other options for Catalent to pursue. There were other communities to invest in. This is not, I don't think, the only means by which or the only rationale that they would use to invest in the community, but there are many others. There's the workforce, you know, the education of the community, there's the facilities of the community, there's the land available, and certain things like that, but there are other... This is one of many considerations, and I think that this is a wise investment for the community, and it is completely consistent with the direction of life sciences and biotech investment. It's been work done by both the city of Bloomington, by the BEDC, by the Chamber. It's consistent within our vision policies. It's consistent within the various public and private partnerships that we've done. It's consistent with the education that we've invested in, for instance, at Ivy Tech, which is producing local employment for this investment. So I think it's multifaceted. This is not the only thing that, you know, it hangs on in terms of the investment by Catalent, but it's a part of the picture. And I want to thank Catalent for investing in our community. It's much appreciated, and I think this is a very good example of the public-private dimension of how we can provide good employment for the community and investment for us. So if there are no other comments, Councilmember Chopra? Yeah, go ahead.
I apologize for deciding late to comment. I will be voting no, as I did the previous date that we discussed this project, not because I don't value new businesses and not because I don't think it's important to see wages growing and jobs growing, but this, and I said it last time, is a reward and not an incentive. A tax abatement should be an incentive, should be something that is used to convince a business to do something. And that I've been clear about, but I wanted to make another point that, you know, we have many, many local, small, and medium-sized businesses that offer jobs in this city and that also provide jobs, good-paying, living-wage jobs that sustain our economy, and they're not getting these tax abatements. And I bet you what they do is probably to scale if they were able to get tax abatements based, you know, the size of the business and the number of employees they have, and if they could get a tax abatement, would be able to do what Catalent does at a smaller scale. And it just doesn't... It's just not right. I'm happy to support businesses to be successful, but I'm not happy to reduce the tax obligations on large corporations when we have so many problems in the city that we're trying to solve and we don't have the money to do so. I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Call the question?
Okay, the questions are called in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff?
No.
Chopra?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Granger?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 1904 is adopted. Five-two. We'll now move on to legislation for first reading.
I move that ordinance 1907 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's moved in second that ordinance 1907 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Orderance 1907, amending Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding updating permissible towing and storage fees for authorized towing services. The synopsis is as follows: Ordinance 1907 updates the maximum fees authorized towing services may charge when performing city-initiated toes. At present, the city permits a maximum towing fee of fifty-five dollars for daytime towing, sixty-five dollars for nighttime towing, twenty-five dollars for dollying, ten dollars or fifteen dollars per day of storage, depending on whether or not the vehicle is wrecked, and a fifteen-dollar-per-night retrieval charge. These maximum permissible fees have remained unchanged since 2001 and therefore have fallen out of line with the maximum permissible fees utilized by all other government agencies in Monroe County. Ordinance 1907 updates and simplifies permissible maximum towing fees by authorizing a one-hundred-twenty-five-dollar base towing fee regardless of the time the tow is initiated, maintaining the existing twenty-five dollying fee, and updating permissible storage fees to twenty-five dollars per day regardless of whether or not the towed vehicle is wrecked. Thank you.
We'll now go to additional public comment. Anyone would like to speak on items not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll visit our council schedule. Mr. Sherman, we have a work session on Friday.
Yes, you do, and the one item to discuss is the... An appropriation ordinance that would appropriate additional funds for the repair of the Fourth Street Garage. So that's ready for your discussion, consideration on Friday. It would be... If it moves forward, would be part of a packet going out the following Friday for consideration during the Wednesdays of March twentieth, March twenty-seventh, and April third. Would like to have a sense whether you would want to hold that meeting and let you know that if we do so, and I expect we will find people wanting to attend, we expect to move it to a larger room.
A larger room? Okay. Other than the council library. So who would like to attend that? By show of hands?
I would like to.
Well, who expects to? I mean...
Okay, one, two, three, four, five people.
Okay, looks like we'll need a full room.
So we will hold that meeting. Just a reminder that we are going into a committee of the whole later on this evening and will not meet next week because of spring break.
Very good. Is there any... Do you have a sense of what room we might reserve?
Excuse me?
For the work session?
Yes, there is a meeting in the McCloskey Room that stops at noon, and I anticipate that's where we'll meet.
Okay, in case the public wants to attend. So it may...
Yes.
It will likely be the McCloskey Room, but it'll be noticed at the council office, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, and we'll reconvene in a moment for the committee of the whole.
I will call this committee of the whole to order on this sixth day of March 2019. We do only have one item on the agenda, which is to discuss ordinance 1907 amending Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Updating Permissible Towing and Storage Fees for Authorized Towing Services. This evening, we have asked as a council, Mike Rooker, our city attorney, to attend, and I believe you have a presentation for us, Mr. Rooker.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember...
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chopra. Michael Rooker, City Attorney for the City of Bloomington. Tonight, we're presenting... I'm presenting ordinance 19-07, which proposes an update to the maximum permissible towing fees that the city's towing partners may charge when they respond to city-initiated toes. To give you a little bit of background information, the city of Bloomington partners with a number of local towing companies to handle vehicle towing that's required from the city's right-of-way or from city parking lots or other city property. Right now, the city partners with four companies: Ken's Westside Towing, Rick's Towing, Auto Mobile Towing, and Hawkins Towing. Over here to my left are representatives from Ken's, Rick's, and Auto Mobile tonight. Unfortunately, Hawkins couldn't make it, but we do have some other folks present. These city-initiated toes that these folks respond to are governed by a number of regulations. Some are set forth in the city code, some are set forth in a contractual agreement between the city and these towing companies. One of the terms that's set forth in the city code is the maximum permissible rates that may be charged when they respond to city-initiated toes. I think it's important maybe to draw a quick distinction between what we're talking about tonight and also what people would typically call a tonight, and also what people would typically call a private tow. So ordinance 1907 is proposing some changes that would affect public tows or city-initiated tows. It wouldn't have any impact on what we call private tows. So those are tows from private property that are initiated by either a private business owner or a private individual, and that's arranged between the individual or the business and another towing company. So tows from, for example, a restaurant parking lot or from an apartment complex's parking lot would be a private tow, and those wouldn't be governed at all by this ordinance. Anyways, getting back to this particular ordinance, last year, some of the city's towing partners reached out to us and said that they believed that our towing fees...
Excuse me, I think our mics have somehow...
You know, I was thinking the same when I started to speak, that they didn't seem to be on. They were on previously, right? Thank you.
Now they're working.
I think that's better?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out. Do I need to start over, or can I just proceed from there? Is that okay? Okay, great. So last year, some of our towing partners pointed out that our fees seemed to be inconsistent with some of the other fees that they were permitted to charge for the other public entities that they service in Monroe County. As you can see by the chart that's on your screen, after we did a little bit of research, that did appear to be the case. So the base fee that's permitted by Monroe County, Indiana University, ISP, Indiana State Police, and Elletsville, those base fees are quite out of line with what the city's current base fee is. The base fee for those entities is $125. Our fees are currently $55 for a daytime tow or $65 for a nighttime tow. Similarly, the storage fees that the city permits, the maximum storage fees the city permits its authorized towing services to charge are lower than the other entities as well. We permit a charge of either $10 for an operable vehicle or $15 for a wrecked vehicle. Other entities are permitting either between $20 or $35, depending on what they choose to allow. So we're proposing an update to those two particular charges in ordinance 1907. Ordinance 1907 would bring the base fee up to $125, the maximum permissible base fee, and the maximum per-day storage fee to $25 for our authorized towing services. You know, this is important for a couple of reasons. We want to continue to partner with responsible, effective, and efficient companies. We want to continue to draw their interest. And we also want to make sure that those rates are fair, and that they permit our partners to provide proper equipment, proper PPE, proper safety equipment, and also a fair wage to their workers. You know, I don't, I don't want to minimize this ordinance, but on some level, we really do view this as one of those almost housekeeping measures that's necessary from time to time. There are lots of rates and fees in the city code, and we need to look at those periodically to see if they've grown stale. This one hasn't been touched in nearly two decades, and so it is out of line with what other people are permitting. So I'm happy to address any questions you may have. Our towing partners are here as well, they're happy to address questions from the council, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Rooker. Questions from my right, Mr. Rallo?
Mr. Rooker, I'm sorry, you just sat down, but you've already stated this, but I just want to clarify. So the discrepancy is because it has been unaddressed for some time?
Yeah, that's right. This ordinance, or excuse me, these rates haven't been touched since 2001, so that's nearly 18 years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. There's no longer a night retrieval charge, is that because there's no longer night retrieval of the cars?
No, so a night retrieval charge is if you wanted to come pick up your car from the towing company at night. We would, they still perform tows at night, but it just, you know, there were a lot of rates, and our, the rates we were charging were a lot more complicated than what we were seeing other agencies charge, which we believe made it more difficult both for the towing companies to administer and for members of the public to determine what a fair charge would be. So this is simplifying those rates by getting rid of the night retrieval charge, and then also saying the base fee's going to be $125 regardless of when the tow is initiated, and that the storage fee is, the maximum storage fee is $25 regardless of whether or not the vehicle is wrecked or operable.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions by council members, and this is not up for public debate. It is? Okay, fine then. Let's do that. If there is anyone here this evening that would like to comment on ordinance 1907 as described, please do come to the podium. Please write your name, and introduce yourself to the council, please.
Hi, my name is Ken Parish. I own Ken's Westside Service and Towing here in Bloomington. First and foremost, thank you for taking the time to listen to us, and we appreciate everything that you do for us. So with that being said, I've been in this business since I was 18-year-old. I am second-generation towing service. I've owned this business for going on seven years after my father retired. We've serviced Bloomington and the community for several years. I have been around since the last time it was addressed, working underneath my dad. All of these guys that you see over here, Rick Heaton with Rick's Towing is here as well, Matt James with Auto Mobile Services here in Bloomington as well, as he said earlier, one of us couldn't be with us tonight, for that, we apologize. We just want you guys to know and understand what this means to us as, with our small Since this was last addressed, we could probably buy a tow truck, this is just little things, but, you know, we could buy a tow truck in 2001 for about $40,000 to do the same services in which we perform for you guys today. That same said truck now cost us $105,000 to purchase and put into operation. Obviously, cost of living has increased, I don't have to explain to you guys what that increase is, you guys know all that, but to get a decent wage on a driver at this point in time, these rates have got to go up. We do pay generally by percentage, you know, what the driver does, that increases his payroll. Second of all, we are getting out of bed at 2:00 in the morning and going and getting these accidents, these calls, and at $55 a day and a small percentage of that, you can imagine how discouraged a driver is, or how unhappy he is to get out of bed for a City of Bloomington call. Not that he won't do it, he is more than happy to do it, we've done it for years and will continue to do so. With a few other things being said, there are a lot of other things that go into contribution A little bit about myself, I am president of the District 7 with the ITWA, which is the Indiana Towing and Racker Association for the state of Indiana. We work with legislation up in Indianapolis quite a bit as partnership and speaking back and forth, trying to get a lot of things going, but as they tell me, we have to start with our local governments to try to get change and try to do something with us. I also would like to build a relationship with you guys to where if you guys have any questions at any point in time, whether it be towards this type of towing that we do, or in the private towing sector that I know can sometimes be a thorn in someone's side occasion that you guys may or may not deal with. Be happy to answer any questions with that at a later date. We have also recently been recognized through the state, through the incident management control systems, that they are now conducting classes through Indiana State Police, Indiana Fireman's Associations, they're actually hosting classes and everything. They are actually beginning to recognize towing services as first responders. By doing so, we are going to be held to a higher standard than what we have been in the past. That being said, our quality of vehicles that we show up on scene, our equipment that we have to use, things have got to be rated, they have to be stamped, they have to meet OSHA standards. 20 years ago, when all this went into place, that wasn't such a case. We weren't bound by certain criterias or held to certain standards. We weren't asked to be in certain uniforms. ANSI 3 reflective, as you guys can see with my uniform. Being on these highways and being safe, not only is that to accreditate ourselves, to let you guys know what this means to us as to be a part of the first responders, unfortunately, all of this costs money. And for us to be able to do this and provide safety for our employees that work with us, we spend extra money, and all of this comes out of our pocket to make drivers more visible with the fire department, with the, with the police that we work with side by side on the roadways. You know, we go on and on about the moveover law, we are a part of that. We are the people that are, that are getting run over and killed every day because of this. These rates will help that with us significantly, and I can't tell you how much it would help my business, as well as these gentlemen that sit over here, to get our rates up to a normal standard to where it makes business practices easier and financially able to do what we do at a safer level. Ultimately, our goal is to be safe and offer a proper service to everyone in our community at a fair rate. We're not trying to, for, ask anything from, from any of you or our community to pay some outrageous price. We just ask that the city come up to what other entities in the area that we tow for, and we are bound by contract, just to come up to their standards and make it easier for us to do business with you, and all that stuff. Again, I can't tell you how much we appreciate all the opportunities that you guys give us and allow us to work with you. I want to do this for a lot of years. I'm still, I'd like to think a young man, and I think I'd like to be a part of this community for a lot more years. With that being said, if you guys have any more questions or anything about that, I'd be happy to answer anything. Again, please, please, do not interpret what we're asking you that has anything to do with the private towing that Mr. Rooker spoke on earlier. We don't do private towing. None of the four companies that are involved with Bloomington Contract and your towing services do private towing services in this area. We do it for our reasons. We'd be more than happy to discuss that with you later time, why we don't do that. We want to try to stay as professional for you guys as we possibly can, and meet those standards, is why we're asking for it again. And again, thank you for everything.
Thank you. Well, I understand you are speaking as a member of the public this evening, I'd be happy as chair to allow council members to entertain questions to you if there are any. I think Councilmember Sims had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Parish. Can you give us an idea, and you said your drivers earn a percentage?
Yes.
Can you give us an idea of what's the base pay? And I don't want exact, I just kind of want to get an idea.
I would say as a, I can speak on behalf of my company, but I would say as an average in a community, an average percentage would be anywhere from 25% to 30% of what the call pays to the truck. So if it was $55 for a tow-in for a Bloomington Police Department call, he would make top 30% of that call for his wage. Now that being said, most Bloomington police calls, accident scenes, first and foremost, we have 30 minutes to respond. We have anywhere from 30 to 45 minutes on scene at the most, generally, if it's a non-major incident. If it's just a traffic stop or a illegally parked vehicle or something like that, we're going to have an hour to an hour and 15 minutes invested. So if you can take the percentages, I apologize, I don't have a calculator in front of me at this moment, but $55 at 30%, that's basically your hourly wage for that driver who is taking himself away from his family, whether it be at dinner, or holidays, or whatever, to respond to a police call at a not-so-great wage for what this gentleman or female does.
Okay. Thank you. No, thank you.
Sir, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit, but I feel obliged to do so. I keep using the word gentleman, but you do have women employed as well, is that correct?
We do.
In fact, you have one.
As a matter of fact, I have my lovely wife here with me today.
There you go.
And I promise you, she probably works harder than any of us guys at any given day.
I believe you, sir. Thank you very much, I just think that's important to recognize.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else from the public here tonight who'd like to speak on this Seeing none, I do think that we have additional council questions perhaps for the administrators? No? Okay, never mind. We did. Okay?
Move to pass?
Second.
Second.
Would we like a comment period? Councilmember Granger, make a comment. Go ahead.
I just want to point out, we've been, it seems the city's been kind of lax in reviewing our fees, fines, charges, and we need to stay on top of this better, particularly when it has this impact on individuals not working directly for the city. So I think it's past time that we've done this, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Councilmember Seer?
Well, first of all, I do want to thank Mr. Parish and everyone who's here tonight representing those of you who provide this service. I think it is absolutely right that we vote to increase this, I certainly will be, and I learned a lot from hearing you talk about what you do, and how your, your professionals are paid, and the fact that you're considered first responders, and I think that's important. We here in the City of Bloomington support our police officers and our fire, fire teams, and certainly happy to make sure that your individuals are getting fair wages for the really hard and dangerous work that you do, so thank you.
We had a motion due pass.
Second.
And I'll start on my right for a voice vote.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe that's a due-pass recommendation of 7-0. That concludes our business for this evening. We are adjourned.